I am Mayor Oakes and I'm going to now open up the work session meeting for July 23rd, 2020 at 5:00 PM. I'd like to make a few comments before we go into the meeting. If you come into the City Hall building, please wear a mask. If you come into the chambers, please wear a mask. If you go up to the microphone, you can take your mask off to speak. And there are some Clorox wipes that you can wipe the mic down with before speaking and after. If you have to leave the chambers, please make sure you have your mask on if you have to go to the restroom. Please make sure you're wearing your mask. And with that, as Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamlined on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask the Clerk of Council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Dahl.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Ms. Mead.
I beg your pardon, I'm here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
I confirm that all council members are present.
I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, all city employees and officials who are participating in this evening's work session and regular meeting will do so in council chambers. We will have some participants both during the work session and the regular meeting who are representing themselves or various organizations, and they will introduce themselves as the items appear on the agenda.
Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with a notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Public comment will be received during council's regular meeting, which will begin at 7:30 PM. Instructions for public comment by telephone can be found on Agenda for the Regular Meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v-a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also being conducted by Zoom with virtual participation by certain members of city council, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v-a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D 2020 dash 04. Okay. The first item on the agenda under number one is the consideration of work session and regular meeting agendas. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Oakes, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, Councilwoman Mead.
I did not receive any information about the addition of the discussion of liaison assignments from anyone. Is that, do you intend that I add that to the agenda for tonight?
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilwoman Mead. We are actually going to go ahead and hold off to allow the nominating committee to go through all of the documentation because there's still documentation coming in just as of half an hour ago. So they're going to need time to review it, and then we will have it on a meeting in August. I'm not sure at this time if it's going to be the first meeting in August or the second meeting in August, but we will have it on the future agenda. My apologies if you did not receive notification on whether or not to add it, but we do not need to have it added tonight, but thank you. So I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes?
I move to approve the reorganization agenda as stated for July 1st. I'm making two different ones.
Oh.
I don't think.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I move to approve the work session agenda and regular meeting as presented.
All right, so we have a second by Councilman Holm, excuse me, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Holmes. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Question carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is item number two for the work session agenda and item F for the work session agenda as well as the regular meeting agenda, and that is FY 2020 Annual Action Plan relating to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant Program for the City of Stanton as a HUD entitlement community. Mr. Vaughn.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, this is the city's second year, moving into our second year of being a HUD entitlement community. And each year, we're required to develop an annual action plan, which council must approve in order to receive our allocation. And so tonight, we have with us our HUD housing consultant and experts, Jessica Lurds with M&amp;L and Associates, and she has some coworkers that may be participating in the presentation that she can introduce. I'd also like to say that you have a copy of the draft annual action plan in your packet as well as Jessica's presentation. And since we do not have a PowerPoint capability here, she'll make sure that she's stepping you through the slides as she's presenting the information. And there are no questions for me, I'll turn it over to Jessica this time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Vaughn? Hearing none. Thank you, Jessica.
Hi, so my name is Jessica Lurds, and as Mr. Vaughn mentioned, I'm with M&amp;L Consulting Firm that's helping the city develop their 2020 Annual Action Plan. I have two of my colleagues on the phone, Kate Melinaro and Principal Bill Wazaleski with us, in case there are any questions about the presentation, we're here to answer them for you. Mr. Vaughn and the City Manager provided in your packet an overview of what the consolidated planning process is, why you have to complete an annual action plan every year for the Office of Housing and Urban Development. So I won't go through those, but I would like to say that during the 2020 Annual Action Plan, the city held two public hearings early in the process, one to identify the needs in the community as they relate to people who are low to moderate income and are eligible activities under the CDBG program, and a second public hearing to get feedback on the proposed activities that we have listed for you in your packet there. We had very little public comment. We had people grateful for the continued support by the city in their programming, and so I would like to just go over the proposed projects for you and the scheduled timeline. So I'm going to share my PowerPoint, but I will also direct those of you at council to page or slide number nine in your PowerPoint. It should start with proposed projects. So the City of Stanton received as an allocation from CDBG this year of $352,891. The projects that I'm going to discuss will utilize all of those funds for either public services, infrastructure, or housing rehab for the city. The first proposed project is with Valley Mission. The Valley Mission organization is looking to do an initial housing support program, which would provide utility and financial assistance to formerly homeless adults in the city that are moving into safe and affordable housing. They estimate that they'd serve about five to 10 households with about $5,000 from the CDBG grant. This is an activity that was approved last year in 2019's Annual Action Plan and would be continued to be carried out in the next fiscal year. The next program is the Valley Program for Aging Services Meals on Wheels. They've requested $10,000 to continue to provide nutritious meals five days a week to frail older Stanton residents. They approximate that they'll serve about 90 seniors with that. And again, this is also another program that was funded in 2019, and this is a continuation of that program. Valley Program of Aging Services Transportation Assistance, they provide transportation to residents that are 60 years and older or those with a disability to medical and other life necessary destinations when they have no other reliable transportation. And for a budget of $10,000, they look to serve approximately 70 low-income residents in the City of Stanton. And again, this is another project that was funded in 2019, and this is a continuation of that program. Valley Program of Aging Services Transportation Assistance, they provide transportation to residents that are 60 years and older or those with a disability to medical and other life necessary destinations when they have no other reliable transportation. And for a budget of $10,000, they look to serve approximately 70 low-income residents in the City of Stanton. And again, this is another project that was funded in 2019 and would be continued into On page 10 of the presentation, this is a new service that became, that came about as a result of COVID-19. With the CDBG's CARES Act funds, the Blue Ridge Legal Services put in for some funding to help with paying for part of an attorney that would help with the potential evictions that may be a result of people losing income due to COVID-19. They suspect and think that this will continue through into 2020, and so they have applied for an additional $25,000 to pay for an attorney that can continue to help residents who may be in a housing crisis due to COVID-19. The next public service is the Blue Ridge CASA program, and they provide advocacy for abused and neglected children in the city. They suspected that they would serve about 70 low-income children, and they're asking for a budget of $15,000. These funds will be used to help pay for a full-time program assistant. Last year, they received funding as well, and that was to hire a new staff person to help them with their volunteer efforts, and it's been such a successful thing that they actually now need a program assistant. So that's what the 2020-year funding will be looking to pay for. On page 11 of your presentation, we have two programs that were in 2019, which are housing rehab programs, and they are looking to continue their funding. The first is Reroofing Stanton, where they'll do roof replacement for low-income vulnerable homeowners in the city. They are requesting $50,000 and approximately will serve 10 households based on how much it would cost to do the replacement of roof services. The second rehab program is the Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Program. This is a critical repair program where they would provide critical repairs such as electrical or foundation work for low-income homeowners. They have a budget of $25,000 and think that they would serve approximately 10 households in the city. There are two new projects this year. The first is the A Street Aging in Place Project. This is an infrastructure project that's looking to be part of a larger collaborative grant with the state and some other funding sources. The total project cost, including all of the other funding, is $120,000, that they're looking over two years to get some assistance from the city. So for FY 2020, we're proposing to spend $67,313, and then in fiscal year 21 to help pay for the remainder. They're looking to provide 500 feet of water lines and 300 feet of water lines and curb cutting on the A Street project. The next is the Valley Support of Housing, Pump Street. Valley Support of Housing is looking to do some rehab in six units, just doing some modernization of air conditioning, doing and painting cabinets. They think that six people will benefit from these renovations, so that will provide six rental units, and the total budget is $25,000 for this proposed project. And on page 12 of your packet, we have two more public facilities activities that were funded in 2019 that need additional dollars in 2020. The first is the West Beverly Street Sidewalk Project, and that would be removing and replacing 500 feet of sidewalk along West Beverly near the Dollar General to improve ADA accessibility. We estimate that 518 low-income households benefit from that because of the people that live in the surrounding community. The budget for 2020 is $40,000. The second public facility is the Rockway Street Water Line. This is an 810-foot water line replacement in the Rockway Street from Lambert Street. They're looking to serve 40 low-income households with a total budget of $10,000. And last but not least, CDBG Program Administration, so in order for the city to continue to do the general administration that's required for all of the federal funding that you're receiving, the percentage that you're allowed to take is the maximum amount that the city will be requesting, so that's at $70,578. Those are all of the proposed projects, and that's for the total balance. On page 13 of your packet, just to discuss a little bit about the timeline, we've had the Annual Action Plan on display for 30 days, and today is the end of that 30-day period that allows the public to provide any public comment about what they might want to see in the Annual Action Plan or any comments that they have about the proposed projects. We're hoping the council will adopt the plan tonight, and then we will submit to HUD on or about August 15th, which is the absolute deadline that HUD is allowing communities to have, and the program's start date would be October 1st. So you would start to receive fiscal year 2020 dollars October 1 of 2020. That is my presentation, and I'm happy to take any, any questions or anything like that.
Is there any friend to me?
Yes.
Jessica, I ask you, just reading through that, I mean, I like the sounds of it, but how are these people, these individual households, or how are they selected? By application? How do they, you get approved to affect five to 10 households or 90 seniors, you know, all this different thing? How is that selection process?
So the selection process for the actual agencies that are wanting to provide the service was that the city's department, Mr. Vaughn sent out an email requesting any funding requests from local agencies, and they then replied, and we at M&amp;L kind of took a look to see, do they meet the basic requirements of CDBG? Do they meet a national standard? And are they actually in line with the strategic plan that was developed in 2019? The actual projects themselves, depending on who they're going to serve, sometimes they have to do an income eligibility intake, so they may have to decide if a household comes seeking services, they'll need to have an application process in place so that a household can apply for, say, the roofing program. They would advertise that they have this available, a household would apply, and they would need to ensure that the household is eligible for the program.
Right. Councilwoman Mead?
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of questions. I'm confused about the number of public meetings that were, that were input meetings that took place. I saw one on the calendar for July 9th, I think. I thought there was to be a second one, I didn't find that on the calendar.
There was one.
And so that's the first question I have. And then secondly, I saw that one person attended one of those public comment meetings. How many people attended the second one?
Let me pull that up. On the second one, I believe we only had one person who attended, and that was through the CASA, oh, sorry, that was the Virginia Aging, the Valley Program for Aging Services.
So it was a, it was a, it was attended by a, one of the agencies that was looking, so other, there was no real comment from other members of the public?
Yeah.
And during this 30-day comment period, was there any comment? Did any comment come in from the public?
Mr. Vaughn would need to answer that. He hasn't sent me anything, but I don't believe that they've received any public comment at this time.
Herr Dahl, we have not received any comments, any questions on the document. Keeping in mind that, you know, this whole process took place during the pandemic, and so we tried our best to advertise, we tried our best to share that information with those organizations that received funding last year, and that we're looking this year to share that with a lot of their own individuals that are receiving services. So we tried our best to get it out there, but again, during the pandemic, it's just been tough to get public input.
One other question.
Go ahead.
One other question. I'm assuming that, in other words, that certain people that are affected this year in 2020, there were some in 2019, they are different, they would be different families, so you could spread as much benefit as around, or is the ones that received it here, this year would not be eligible next year? Is that correct? Or?
What we've attempted to do with our program is to provide funding to those nonprofits that are already providing services to the low-modern income individuals. And so that might happen, but we're not sure. But I do know that engaging with all those organizations, they don't have enough funding prior to the city becoming entitlement to serve the entire community. And so with this additional funding, we felt it was better to take those dollars and fund it to those individuals, those organizations that know how to provide those services instead of the city creating a new vehicle for assisting low-modern income.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn, is there anything in here that's going to offer any grant relief for some of these people that are going to be coming out of unemployment funds and maybe be way behind on their rent? Is there any kind of help, assistance for them in that aspect?
I'll just answer that, but I don't believe for this, we did have a round of additional funding for the FY 19 HUD funds, called it COVID-19 funding, and I think some of those organizations will use some of that funding for rent. Again, Jessica, do you recall?
Yes, you have, with your, with your COVID CARES Act funding through CDBG, you have two organizations that will be providing rental assistance to households who are impacted by the pandemic.
And that was a separate pool of funds that council approved earlier this year.
Okay, are there any additional questions?
This is Carolyn Dahl. I just wanted to state at this time that I'll be recusing myself from any discussion or the vote on this, just to avoid the appearance of impropriety as my brother is the Executive Director of Blue Ridge Legal Services.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, let's move on to item number three and G. It's three on your work session and G on the work session as well as the regular meeting agenda. Discussion of Council Procedure Memorandum Number Five, Grant Applications. Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This item is on the agenda as a result of some discussions during your meeting on July 9th. Council will recall that this procedure memorandum was among those adopted by council at the organizational meeting on July 1st, and it took a slightly different form than it had in prior years in that it required that all grant applications, whether requiring a local match or not, be approved by city council prior to their submission. At your last meeting, I provided to you two examples of situations in which we had a very short turnaround between a notice of funding opportunity and a grant application deadline, and I suggested to you that perhaps to take account of those circumstances, it might be appropriate to further modify the procedure memorandum to allow greater flexibility for those short turnarounds. So what you have in front of you is a revised draft that restores the original language as it has been in effect in prior years, but it adds an additional requirement in the final paragraph that requires the city manager to report to city council grants that don't require a match for your information no later than the second meeting of city council following the approval and submission of that grant application. So in an attempt to summarize, if there's a local match required, it would still come to council for prior approval before the grant application is submitted. If it does not require a local match, we will proceed with the grant application, and then we'll provide a report to council by the second council meeting following our submission of the grant application. And we drafted it to impose a deadline of the second council meeting because, again, I envisioned circumstances where, where there was such a short period of time between our grant submittal and the next council meeting, you know, it could be as short as one day, that it seemed to me to make sense to provide a slightly longer additional period of time before we fulfill that reporting obligation to council.
All right.
Thank you.
Are there any questions by council members?
You know, I've read.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've read everything, Mr. Manager, and after, you know, just reading it again, at this time, I would just simply ask that we keep memorandum number five as is, and simply take the approach that we had talked about earlier, which you've done at other, at other times. If you have, if there's something coming up, you simply shoot us an email. We can have, you know, get back to you with, if you get four yeses, go with it. Absolutely, go with it, and then we'll approve it at the next meeting. I mean, it's been done that way before, and I think it's absolutely fine. I don't, I really, right now, you know, we, we approved it as such, and I'd like to keep it that way, and we'll simply, you know, we'll work with you as best we can, you know, and if it's a short time, get us an email, let us respond to it and go with it, and then we'll, if we approve them, we'll approve it at the next meeting. That's just the way I feel about it. I don't know how the rest of you do.
Yes, Councilman Holmes.
If it's not anything that we've got to be matching funds for, I don't see why we have to tie their hands, because we had the one that came up that was, if they hadn't have found it when they did, they might not have got it. And some of us are hard to get ahold, I am, I'm hard to get ahold of sometimes, you know? So, I mean, if, if they're going to tell us about it, I can't imagine us turning down any money for anything if it's going to help the city. So I would think it's just, it's a no-brainer to let it, to let it be adjusted the way it is here, because anything that we have to put up money for, they're going to bring it before us before they apply. So I would think that it would be better to leave it at the way it is, right here. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Can you name some other occasions in which we vote on items retrospect after the fact? Budget?
Well, I think, well, when you qualify it with, with budget, I'm not sure that I can provide an answer to that question. Another example of retroactive approval is these temporary. these temporary relief ordinances that have been adopted by council in response to the public health emergency. Some of those have been retroactive, retroactive in their application.
All right, one last time.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
I, I just haven't, I just haven't quite gotten to understanding what the problem is and, and, and why this pre, or this preapproval needs to take place. I just haven't heard that yet.
Vice Mayor Roberts.
Brenda, I, you know, I, I understand, you know, your, your reticence. It's just, maybe it's just the way I was raised. You know, maybe I'm being a stick in the mud. But simply, we were elected to, we were elected to guard the citizens' money, what's coming in, what's going out. And in my mind, this is simply a matter of looking, being as open as we can and knowing the citizens that at least they're looking at, looking at what's coming in, going out. Yeah, I, I'm, I don't want us to lose anything. But in my mind, maybe I'm, maybe I'm just, just an old fuddy-duddy. But in my mind, this is simply guarding the people's money and knowing every dime and cent that comes in and goes out. It's just my feeling. If you disagree with that, I totally understand.
I, I totally agree with you on the topic of transparency. Where I, where I kind of fall off is on the issue of whether it's the taxpayers' money or not. If the money is coming from an outside organization, the fund, the funding is coming from the government. It may be coming from other organizations. It is not truly the taxpayers' money unless it requires the taxpayers make a match. So that's where I'm confused.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I may, and I don't know whether this helps, but these funds, as they are received, go through the budget process. And so in the form of budget amendments, there is approval by council of the expenditure of these grant-received funds. So it's not as if there's no approval role for council by proceeding with these modifications to the procedure memorandum. That there is a, there's another process as a part of the budget modification that allows council to vote on the expenditure of these funds.
All right, well, thank you for your comments. We need to go ahead and move on. But item three and G, as well as item two and F, will be voted on in the regular meeting. Now we're on to item number four, the discussion concerning Gypsy Hill Golf Course. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, this item is on the agenda at your request, and I would invite you to begin the discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Claffey.
I, I had the pleasure of going out there and checking it out yesterday, and I played the course. Gypsy Hill Golf Course is open and tough as always. It's not easy and it's not flat. We had 10 golfers play yesterday. The, the 2020 season is basically done. It's midsummer. We're going to get a couple more months play out of it. And, and then the leaves are going to make it difficult, and winter weather is going to set in. So I don't think we can really do anything in the year 2020. But I would propose not a need for a consulting firm to analyze the need of our golf course, but some local citizens to come out and become a, a citizen task force, possibly report to Chris Tuttle, to make plans for improvements in 2021. I talked to Wes Allred yesterday at the golf course. He has forwarded me a list of potential persons, past members, current members, that, that would be interested in participating in such a citizen panel. I've also talked to Bob Mortenson, who is a former golf designer. He's a retired man that does some work here in Stanton. Tom Tattersall, our local first tee representative, has, has displayed an interest in working with the citizens' council. And Walter Obenchain, a, a prior member of this council and a, a longtime golfing buddy of mine. He is interested in working on it as well. So I, I recommend we, we see what we can do for 2021. Let's look forward, let's not worry anymore about this season. Wes has told me that the play is up significantly over last year. And I've driven by several times and looked, the, the parking lot is full. There's a lot of people playing and using the course. And I think we ought to just continue what we're doing for this year and try to improve things for next year.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rosenberg. Do we have any numbers on how the golf course is doing for 2020 despite the COVID-19?
In the, I'm sorry, I have a report here that was provided to me by Mr. Chair, who unfortunately is, is away this evening. So the numbers are, are obviously, you know, down compared to the last fiscal year, in, in large part due to the pandemic.
Because of the shutting down of the golf course during that time period?
Yeah. What, I, I think what I'd like to do, Madam Mayor, is verify some of what I'm looking at here with Mr. Chair and provide a supplemental report to council by email. Because the report that I'm looking at here seems to include, no, I, 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 let me back up, I'm sorry. So in, in fact, it looks like the number of rounds, and again, many of you will recall that there's no distinction made between nine and 18 whole rounds for accounting purposes. In fiscal year 2019, there were 7,100 rounds. In fiscal year 20, there were 8,300 rounds. So 7,100 versus 8,300, so a significant improvement.
And we were closed for two months, don't they?
Yes, so we were closed for the entire month of April. We were, we had partial months in March and May. Even in March, rounds were greater in 2020 than in 2019. In May, they were significantly lower, but we didn't open until the end of May.
Correct.
So, you know, it's not quite a 20% increase year over year, but it, but it's in the high teens. Cart rentals, another measure for FY19 totaled about $46,000. And for FY20, they were almost $62,000. So about a $17,000 difference. Green fees were about $36,000 in FY19 and $48,000 in FY20. Membership fees were flat. So those are the four measures that we have, and I can share this with all of you by email in, in the next day or two.
Okay, that would be great. Would you like to address the issue of the outside consultant? Because I know you and I had had a conversation that you were under the impression the majority of this council would not support an outside consultant, but that you had a recommendation for a limited use. Did you want to take this time to explain that to everyone?
Certainly. You know, the, the idea of a citizen task force, I think, is not a bad one. The RFP that we had nearly completed but not yet issued when the pandemic hit included an element for public participation. In the scope of work, we were calling upon the consultant to propose some mechanism to obtain and consider public input as a part of the consultant's work, and whether that would come in the form of workshops or public hearings, or something like a citizens' committee, such as Mr. Claffey has suggested. We felt that it was important to obtain, consider, and incorporate that sort of public input. You know, Chris Tuttle and I have been talking about this for months. And we both continued to take the view that the operation would benefit from the eyes of an outside professional. I won't, you know, I, I won't bore you with the detail of the RFP that we had prepared, but I think that a lot of what we were looking for from a consultant is still appropriate to maximize the asset that we have. And, and while I understand, and I haven't heard a, a discussion about it, but I anticipate that many of you probably would prefer not to see the closure of the golf course. And if that's the case, I think that we can refine the scope of the RFP to be issued so that that's not on the table for consideration, but to guide the consultant in his or her work to consider options and alternatives to, again, maximize the, the operation of the asset that we have. I think, you know, we, we have a golf pro. He, he's one individual. He's been with us for an extended period of time. And, you know, if, if we're truly interested in taking, you know, a, a good thorough look at the operation and making improvements and changes to sustain it and to improve its long-term viability, we believe that it's still an appropriate course to take to engage a consultant.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
This year, the coronavirus and the COVID-19 and the fact that the golf course wasn't open for almost two months. And, you know, there are restrictions on it right now. For instance, everybody had to have an individual golf cart yesterday. We don't know how this is going to continue to go. Golf is a sport that is being enjoyed by record numbers of people this year because you're allowed to get outside and do it. I say now is not the time to make a long-term plan for the golf course. I say let's do what we can do in the short run to keep this thing operational, money-making, not spend any money for a consultant fee. If next year we're in a better financial state, then maybe we want to look into that. But I think the, the important issue right now is not spending money that we don't have and keeping this golf course alive. And you can see that the rounds are up despite the fact we had about seven weeks less putt. So let's just keep doing what we're doing and put this consultant thing on back burner for now.
Yeah, well, Councilman Claffey, what about the idea that you presented concerning just doing away with the outside consultant altogether and bringing in the citizens' task force? Is that something that a staff member could start to formulate now for next year?
I foresee that happening in the fall of this year.
Okay.
For improvements when we open in 2021. I mean, for instance, if you're going to have a youth program, we have no idea where the kids are going to school, whether, when they're available, et cetera. We can't, we don't even have a, a ability to get the word out to children at this point. But maybe we could have plans for a first tee program in 2021 if Mr. Tattersall was able to work with Chris Tuttle, Wes, you know, the, the people that are here that are, where the rubber meets the road, you know, the ones that are here in the field that know what's going on, let them get together and let's try to make this thing go without spending any money.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Claffey, what specific goals would you see this citizens' task force or committee? What goals would you ask them to accomplish?
I would try to get a youth program developmentable by next year. I'd also like to see some league play, men's or women's league, you know, where you can get them out and get them competitive and, and where they have a set day that they go to play. That's how you build traffic at a golf course. And that type of program, just making it more accessible, encouraging play is basically all I'm trying to do and make it, make it easier on the consumer. For instance, they're going to need to look at golf carts eventually. That, that's a big expense. We're not ready to do that yet, don't get me wrong. But they need to have a plan in place to be able to get some fresh carts out there on that course. And that's the type of thing, they, they have to have goals of how many rounds they're going to need to play a year in order for them to be able to afford a capital improvement, like improve number of golf carts.
And, and I have another question. Who's going to decide the comp, the composition of this citizens' group?
I would love to pass that over to Cristo.
I guess my question about that is, will the group include minorities, low-income people, women, young people?
It's interesting golf.
Well, I, I just think there needs to be a commitment to having voices with diverse opinions as well.
Mr. Rosenberg, if this council, if it's the pleasure of this council to move forward with a citizens' task force, is this something that the Parks and Rec Department could formulate and look into having a diverse group of citizens represented on this task force to study the golf course?
Madam Mayor, learning of this proposal, as I have for the first time this evening, I would ask that if this is council's desire, that you afford me the time to confer with Mr. Tuttle and come back to council at the next meeting, first meeting in August, and, and let you know if we're able to, to pull this together along the lines that have been discussed.
Okay.
I have another question.
Yes, Council.
Who would say, who will assist this citizens' group with designing and distributing surveys to citizens of Stanton?
Mr. Rosenberg.
I, I think that's part of what Mr. Tuttle and I will need to discuss. And, you know, obviously, something along these lines will require staff resources. And so we'll need to have a conversation about what that means, and we'll be in a position to share detail with you about that at, at the next meeting.
All right, are there any further questions? Is council wanting some additional information? Vice Mayor.
Well, I'm just going to say, and, and just me, just to let you know that I actually do, I did read some of your literature. I, I, I think it's a good idea to look at possibility of, of doing, being able to go and play a half, you know, eight, I mean, nine holes instead of 18. Maybe make a, a better 1/19th hole, you know, greater selection of stuff for young people. Hey, that's all part of, part of, you know, the committee could look at. So I did, I did read.
Thank you, I appreciate your reading it, Mark. And I, I'd just like to add that, that the community has a misperception that, 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 that there was a desire on the part of city council previously to close the golf course. And that misperception was, was aggravated by the mailing that was paid for by the 21st Century Virginia PAC that stated that the incumbents running for council wanted to replace Gypsy Hill Golf Course with an arboretum. And I'm not sure where the 21st Century Virginia PAC got their information. But I do know that the PAC made in-kind donations to the campaigns of Andrea Oaks.
Okay, you're out of order. Councilwoman Mead, you're out of.
I'm not out of order. I was recognized.
Yes, because.
I was recognized.
Actually, stay within the subject, and the subject is the golf course, and you veered away.
And I am talking about the golf course and the misperception in the community that city council has previously wanted to close the golf course. That is not true.
So we need to move on to the next item. Mr. Rosenberg, please have staff take a look into this matter and get back to us at the next meeting.
This is Carolyn Dole. I didn't have an opportunity to say anything on this discussion, but I will say, as I said many times since this issue came up, that the point is we're spending almost two cents of the real estate tax on the maintenance and the golf pro and all, everything that goes into running the golf course. And that's fine if people use it. I have said from the get-go that the issue for me is if we're going to put that much of an investment in it, it needs to be used. And that's all I've ever said about the golf course. And so I continue to say that. You know, I don't want to spend two cents of our real estate tax on the golf course if only, and I don't care about the rounds. I care about the people. If we've only got eighty people, that's not an efficient use of that money. So my point has always been it needs to be utilized.
Okay. And your point has been on the record in the minutes, just like the comments concerning the arboretum has been in the minutes for the public to read. Now, let's move on to the next item.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, it would be helpful to have an informal sense of the desires of council members on this issue and whether, whether that desire is to defer engagement of a consultant and to return to council with a report concerning the possible establishment of a citizen task force.
Yes.
And so perhaps you could just take a formal.
Yes, for point.
Not, not a formal motion, but just.
Right. Councilman Claffey.
I would definitely be in favor of that.
Right. Nice, Madam. Councilman Holmes?
I'm in favor of that, yes.
All right. Councilwoman Darby?
I'm in favor of that.
Councilwoman Mead?
I'm in favor of deferring spending money on a consultant. I just want to make sure that this mission represents all of the people of Stanton and not a limited number of people.
All right. Councilwoman Dole?
I'm in favor of deferring it, but I'm not necessarily opposed to Mr. Rosenberg's suggestion of using fresh eyes that have expertise in this area to point out ways where we could maybe improve usage.
Right. And I am in favor of you coming back in August with your research. So please do so, the first meeting in August.
Very good. Thank you.
Right. With that, let's move on to item number five, which is the discussion of possible statement concerning use of face coverings. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, members of council, this item is on the agenda at the request of Councilman Holmes, and I would invite him to begin the discussion.
Since this COVID-19 thing has been going on, and especially since the governor has, you know, here, since this COVID-19 pandemic's been going on and we've had, the governor require masks in public places, you know, it's become, it's really put on business owners to enforce this, and it's causing a lot of people, they either are getting a lot of flack from the citizens who don't want to wear a mask, or they're just not letting people, they're not making people wear masks at all. And I'm not saying that we pass an ordinance, but what I would like to do is, in the strongest way we possibly can without passing an ordinance, that we, you know, try to get people to wear a mask. It's proven that it stops some of the germs or the virus from penetrating your face if you've got a mask on. And when you work in places, it's not fair for an employee to work in a place for eight to ten hours and have people coming in without a mask on who could constantly be infecting them because if you get, if I get a case in Mill Street, I've got to close my whole restaurant down. It's got to be closed for fourteen days. And I don't feel like arguing with somebody when they come in and tell me they don't want to put a mask on. You know, it's just, it's my business and it's something that I've worked for for twenty-eight years. And I definitely don't want to see it because somebody doesn't want to wear a mask. It's no different than putting shoes on or putting your seatbelt on in a car. So I don't understand why people are being so dogged about it. And I just think that if we, as a city council, you know, would do some things to try to promote it, maybe make a video with all of us in it promoting the wearing a mask or just basically maybe even going out in public, doing things, handing out masks or doing something that would really make it look like we're concerned. Because I think a lot of people, you know, aren't concerned. And it makes it really hard to, it makes it hard to convince those people to put a mask on. And I go through, in my place, I go through almost a case of those disposable ones a week, giving them out to people that don't have a mask.
Wow.
And it's, I've talked to Sarah at Baja, she has the same problem. I've talked to the guy in Chitano Boys, and he's having the same problem. You know, he's not even seating inside, he's just seating on his patio, you know, because he doesn't want to take the chance of the getting inside his building. And it's, and it's, I'm already out there, so I, you know, I'm as good, if I get it, if I was to get it, I could expose a lot of people in a very short time before I even knew I had it.
Right.
You know, and that's why, it's a concern to me because I don't want to give it to any of my employees, I don't want to give it to any of my customers. And I just think that it's something that we all could come together and do a resolution that would, would at least put our, put our face on, behind the mask, so to speak.
Now, Councilman Holmes, are you looking for a statement?
Yes, I'm looking for a statement.
Okay. Like a written drafted statement for the council to vote on and approve?
I don't.
Because you mentioned the video.
I don't know about something we go that far with, but I think a video would be good. I think the fact that we all come together, be seen with masks on, get our pictures taken and put it on the websites, do things like that to show and stress it on the websites that, that wearing a mask is, you got to wear a mask, you know. It would be a hard time, it'd be a hard sell to demand people wear masks. I mean, the governor's already done it and people aren't doing it.
Right.
You know, and it leaves, it leaves it to business people to enforce it, you know, and depending on where you go, some people do, some people don't. I don't know if it's, but their employees have masks on, you know. And so I just, I don't think it's fair to them and I don't think it's fair to other businesses. It would, it would make it a lot easier on us instead of making us look like the bad guys, you know, if we came down as a group and suggested that people wear masks.
Are there any questions for Councilman Holmes or a statement anyone would like to express?
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, Councilwoman Mead.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to state my strong support for Mr. Holmes and this issue. And I'd also like to say that because Terry, his very life and livelihood depends on his customers wearing masks, and because Carolyn Dole has been a leader in the community in complying with mask-wearing, social distancing, and recommendations to stay at home, I think they are the two most credible spokespeople on city council to make statements on the city council Facebook page about how much they care about citizens' well-being and about encouraging everybody to follow the guidelines so that we don't find ourselves taking a step back at this critical point in time when our kids, we're trying to get our kids back in school. But I think they're the two credible people who can make this statement.
Thanks for that note of confidence.
I'm going to say, Brenda, people don't listen to me now, so I don't know why they listen to me in a, in a video, but.
So is there.
Terry, we appreciate where you're coming from.
Well, I just, I would like, you know, I think the more the merrier. I don't know if we could do one where we cut to each one of us or something and say the reasons why we, we think you should wear a mask, you know. But I mean, you know, in any place, if anybody gets a case that's tied to their place, then they're going to be shut down for fourteen days. And that's, that will kill most small businesses.
Yeah.
You know.
Is there any interest with the other council members to create a video?
I'm fine with whatever. I think it's, you know, showing that, to encourage folks and be supportive of people wearing masks when they're going into establishments. I mean, I think that's appropriate.
Whatever we can do.
Yeah, whatever we can do.
As long as I don't make the dance.
Yes, Mr. Rosenberg.
We would be pleased to have a conversation with Lee Catlin, who you recall is helping us with our communications program, and come back to you with some suggestions. Again, if it's, if it's the consensus, you know, I sense a lot of agreement here amongst council members, and we can have a conversation with Ms. Catlin and come back to you with some ideas and perhaps do that by email so that it doesn't require a lengthy turnaround, but we can move forward with, with an initiative along those lines.
We, we actually had a, one of our owners came in to the pharmacy, and I'm sure that would apply to restaurants as well, but, that if you, evidently the new governor's mandate, and it's not going to be enforced by police, but it's going to be enforced by Virginia Department of Health, and if you're caught not following the mask, it's thirteen thousand dollar fine.
Well, and they could pull your license.
Exactly.
They can pull your license also, so.
Yeah.
And regular people don't understand it, you know, and it's not out there. They just, and I hate it, but so many people, it's a political thing, and it's not a political thing. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just, it's a health thing. And it's, and it's, I've got a lot of kids that work for me that are single parents, and if they get sick, they got nothing to fall back on.
Right.
You know, and it's, and it's that way in a lot of these businesses.
Okay. It sounds like the majority of the council would like to see this video. So, Mr. Rosenberg, if you could do some research and let us know through email.
Very well. Thank you.
On to item number six, which is a discussion of possible reaffirmation of council's statement on racial justice. Councilwoman Mead?
Yes, thank you. This is the item that I brought forward. Recently, many citizens have approached me since the city council issued the June 12, 2020 statement where we condemned racially motivated violence and the murder of George Floyd and to express their concern that the current city council may not share the commitment to racial equity that was made in that statement. They are especially concerned that the statement will end there with the statement and not be followed by actions of the city council to combat racial equity in Stanton. I'm going to quote from that statement for just a minute. "Structural racism that has played out against generations of black individuals and families must be confronted and dismantled to achieve the equal protection, freedom, access, and representation deserved by all individuals. We appreciate the passionate dialogue that is happening right now on the streets and in the homes of Stanton and other communities, and support peaceful expressions of anger, pain, and grieving as necessary and justifiable calls for action and pushes for continued change and improvement. While we do not have all the answers right at this moment, we will immediately consider specific initiatives that will help the city ensure fair and equitable treatment of all Stanton residents and visitors, including in interactions with law enforcement." So I propose that the new city council, or the city council as newly organized July 1st, reissue the June 12, 2020 statement and commit to planning a course of action to meet the commitment expressed in that statement.
All right. Are there any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
Well, I appreciate the city council declaration at the June 11 meeting following the nation's unrest after the heinous murder of George Floyd. Much has occurred since then. Our country has experienced peaceful protests, but also widespread looting and rioting, all in the name of racial injustice. From these protests, a defund police movement has also arisen. Fortunately, our city of Stanton has not experienced any destruction of property, but we have had two tragic murders since then. We must thank our police force for the admirable job they have done in arresting persons in both cases. Rather than reaffirming previous statements made in response to national events, I would prefer to keep things local and express our support for our law enforcement personnel who provide for the safety and welfare of all of our city's citizens. Thank you.
Mayor Dole?
Yes, Councilman Holmes?
Sorry. Mayor Oakes.
All right.
I'd also like to incorporate, you know, Ophi's building bridges. He's done a great job bringing everybody together. If you've ever been to one of those events, there are people of all color, and there's one coming up next Thursday, and I think it's a good thing for us to go to. I think it's a good thing for us to be seen there because we don't have the racial tension here. But, you know, you never know when it could flare up. And Ophi has been a great, he's been great at bringing people together. And I, I don't, I don't think we should water down the statement that we made the last time, you know. And I, I just think that, you know, in this area, we get along really well, and I, and I don't think anybody here is for cutting the police force, you know, or reallocating their funds or anything like that. I think Jim Williams is the best police chief we've had since I've lived in this camp, and I've been through a lot of them. And, and so I would like to think that, that we pretty much have things under control. So I would like for us not to water down the statement that we made before. Maybe, maybe there's some way to include them together, but I don't think we should water down the statement that we made before.
Okay. Well, the statement that we have in place has already been voted on by a majority of this council, so it's already in place. So there's no need to vote on it again because the majority of this body of government has already supported it. And under Roberts' rules, if you have voted in the affirmative, you can bring it back up, but you normally do that in order to vote against it. And I'm assuming, Councilwoman Mead, you're bringing this back up not to vote against it?
No, I do not want to vote against that statement made June 12, 2020. And my point is not that this is about, the statement wasn't necessarily about national, it was about national racial unrest, but it was also about local racial inequities. And, and we have inequity in our schools, we have inequity in employment, we have inequities in homeownership. There are many areas, well, we have inequities in our own boards and commissions on city council. How many boards and commissions have minority representation? I know the answer to that. So it isn't, this isn't about national racial inequity. This is about racial inequity right here in the city of Stanton and about taking action to determine where those inequities are and putting plans in place to cure those inequities.
We already have the statement in place that was voted on by the majority of this council. Now, if we're looking for the new council members to, to vote, it's already in place. If they want to make individual statements, they can do so on their own, but as a body of government, the majority of this council has already stated that they support it. So it's kind of redundant to vote on it again when it's already in place.
Okay, I don't, we don't need to vote on it again. I just want to hear that this council is committed to planning a course of action to meet the commitment that was expressed in that statement.
And the majority of the council voted yes when they voted on the statement. So it's, it's been completed. This is a completed statement through a majority vote on, with this council.
So this council will prepare a plan of action to address those inequities.
Well, we voted on the statement, the majority of this council voted on the statement to, to support the racial justice within, like you said, not only. to support the racial justice within, like you said, not only the nation, but Stanton. So we have already voted on the statement, so it's, it's been completed. Your request has been completed.
This is Carolyn Doll.
I think what people are saying is that the statement is good, the statement is great. Now what people want to see is action.
Well, this is Carolyn Doll. Ms. Mead, could you reread the piece of the statement that talks about the plan?
Yes. "While we do not have all the answers right at this moment, we will immediately consider specific initiatives that will help the city ensure fair and equitable treatment of all Stanton residents and visitors, including in interactions with law enforcement."
So that's, that has not been done.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I understand what you, I understand, the majority of this council voted on it. And I know you're trying to draw the three of us that weren't on there into your statement. I think you will well know that if you looked on Facebook, whatever, I put a statement out there, because what happened to George Floyd was about as heinous an act as ever could be. And I said, and it will then draw us into some hard, hard discussions. But I also believe, as, as our mayor has said, that there has been a vote on this that has done exactly what you wanted to occur. It says that it is a bad, terrible injustice has happened. And stop smiling, Carolyn. And anyway, what I would like to say, I know it, what I would like to say.
You're out of order.
Oh, I'm not, yes, ma'am, I probably am.
You're the one out of order.
I probably am. What I would like to say.
Well, I would accept your apology at this time.
Not at this time. What I would like to say. Now, boy, that's a pretty one, isn't it?
You asked for it, buddy.
Yeah, I know it.
All right.
That's it.
Please finish your statement.
There's not supposed to be personal attacks. I'm relying on our current mayor to call people out of order when they're out of order.
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson.
No, I, no, I.
Okay.
We, Ms. Doll, we have a lot more really, really other items that we need as a council to look forward to. Right now, we're looking at a $2 million possible debt this year, $4-plus million next year. We're gonna, yes, and yes, we can do two things at one time. We will take those items into account, but let's get to the really, really hard stuff about trying to make sure we've got the money to do everything that we as a council have to accomplish. Okay?
Let's move on.
Yeah, this item.
This is Carolyn Doll. I just want to reiterate that the statement we're talking about includes the fact that we will create some initiatives to ensure that we're not inequitable from a racial and, in my opinion, also a gender standpoint in our city. And so you're either, if you say we had a majority currently that voted on that previously, then, then we should be proceeding with creating initiatives.
Okay.
Now, if we're not willing to do that, then you all need to, I guess, vote that we didn't, that you're not reaffirming you want to get rid of this.
Councilwoman Doll, it says reaffirmation of council's statement on racial justice. We have already, the majority of this council's already approved that statement. So we're going to move on to the next item, because this has already taken place. So we're now on to item number seven, which is a closed meeting. "We will go into a closed meeting for consultation and discussion with legal counsel, requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pertaining to legal considerations and discussion involving one possible vacation of city public right-of-way and application of the provisions of Chapter 18.85 of the Stanton City Code to a potential project, and two, specific pending litigation and mediation." All right, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed meeting.
So moved.
You have to read it.
No.
Mayor Oakes.
Councilman Holmes.
I move to enter a closed meeting for the consult, consultation and discussion with legal counsel, requiring the provision of a legal advice by such counsel pertaining to legal consideration and discussing involving one, possible vacation of city public right-of-way and application of the provision of Chapter 18.85 of the Stanton City Code to a potential project, and two, specifically pending litigation and mediation pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second that.
All right, Councilwoman Darby seconds. Ms. Simmons, can you call the roll?
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carried.
All right, we're in closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go out of closed meeting and back into an open session.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes.
After, I move that council convene in an open meeting and certify to the best of each member's knowledge that only lawful exempt public business matters were discussed, and only public business matters as identified in the closed meeting motion were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
I second.
Okay. Councilwoman Darby, second.
Ms. Darby.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mayor Oakes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, we are on break. As Mayor, I call this meeting of Stanton City Council to order. I note that this meeting is being broadcast over the city's cable channel and streamed live on the city's website, so that members of the public may hear our meeting. This meeting is also being recorded. I ask the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting.
Mayor Oakes.
Here.
Ms. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Holmes.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Here.
Ms. Doll.
Here.
Ms. Mead.
Here.
I confirm all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that the city manager, Steve Rosenberg, note the participation of any city officials or colleagues or anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone.
Madam Mayor, members of council, all city employees and officials who are participating in this evening's meeting are doing so here in council chambers. At the present time, I'm aware of one individual participating by Zoom consultant Jessica Lurs, who will participate on item F of the regular meeting agenda.
All right. Please let me mention that notice reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice provided to members of city council. In addition to limited public seating in City Hall, access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During public hearings towards the beginning of the meeting and matters from the public on council's agenda towards the end of the meeting, public comments will be taken in person and by telephone. Members of the public who wish to participate in such matters by telephone at the appropriate time may call 1-844, excuse me, may call 844-854-2222. And when prompted, enter the access code 619358. Hashtag. Callers will be recognized in order. The public is reminded that public hearings and matters from the public are items for council simply to listen to your comments. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes. Detailed instructions for public participation by telephone have been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page, and can be found now on the agenda for this meeting and on council's website at www.ci.stanton.v.a.us backslash government backslash city dash council. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting, although being conducted in person, is also conducted by Zoom with virtual participation of certain members of city council, given the catastrophe catastrophic nature of declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which is part of the total circumstances makes it impractical or unsafe to assemble in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with the city council's ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us backslash C-O-G-O-R-D 2020-04. All right. With that, we now come to some remarks I would like to make about the mask. If you are in the chambers, please wear your mask. If you are walking in the hallways, please wear your mask. If you need to get up to leave to go to the bathroom, again, please wear your mask. If you would care to speak under the public hearing or under matters from the public, feel free to remove your mask while speaking in the microphone. We do offer Clorox wipes if you would like to wipe the mic down before and after you speak. Please be conscientious of your mask, so we can practice being safe around each other in social distancing. With that, I would ask if you would care to, to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on our agenda, invocation, moment of silence, and Councilman Claffey will be giving our invocation or moment of silence.
I came across this quote in the Wall Street Journal a couple, kind of a month ago. And I read it, and it caught my eye, and about three days later, I saw it in a Rotary publication. And the second time I read it, I said, this is, this is worth sharing. So this is a quote from Leslie Dwight, who I have investigated to be a 23-year-old poet from Los Angeles. But this quote has gone viral. And it goes like this. "What if 2020 isn't canceled? What if 2020 is the year we've been waiting for? A year so uncomfortable, so painful, so scary, so raw, that it finally forces us to grow? A year that screams so loud, finally awakening us from our ignorant slumber? A year we finally accept the need for change, declare change, work for change, become the change? A year we finally band together instead of pushing each other further apart? 2020 isn't canceled, but rather the most important year of all."
That's nice.
Amen to that.
Thank you, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the mayor's report. I have been very busy. One thing today I did, I took a two-hour tour of the Innovation Hub. And if you've never been down there to check out the Innovation Hub, I highly recommend that you call the folks down there and ask for a tour. It is, it's just phenomenal. And all the different minds that are coming together under one roof, well, soon to be two, when they finish the renovations of the old News Leader building. It's just absolutely incredible, and it's truly cutting edge. So, again, I welcome you to take a tour of the Innovation Hub. It's up and coming for Stanton. All right, are there any additional items by members of council?
Mayor Oakes, this is Brenda Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that I've been involved late last year with a group called the Stanton Augusta-Wainsboro Housing Council. And this week, I met with Anna Levitt of CAPSaw to work on bringing that group back after we lost our executive director. And the group's focus is to be an omnibus resource for housing issues in Stanton, Augusta, and Wainsboro, including elder housing, homelessness transition, low-income housing, housing for disabled citizens, and racial inequity in housing in the area. Habitat for Humanity will be participating in the group, as well as many other stakeholders, and will continue to build the group. And I'd invite any citizen who'd like to join the conversation to contact me. I've also been privileged to be included in the weekly conversations of a group of citizens who are focused on racial inequity in education, jobs, city board and commission participation, homeownership, and the criminal justice system in Stanton. The group is developing a data-based approach to establish benchmarks for the justice or for, for progress in these areas with a goal of outlining concrete action steps. You'll be hearing more about that group. I also attended with Mayor Doll, excuse me, with Carolyn Doll, the Shenandoah Valley Partnership's annual meeting. Over the past 12 months, the Shenandoah Valley has announced more than $150 million in new capital investment and 266 new jobs. In April, the state's Go Virginia Board approved funding for the Shenandoah Valley Business Scale-Up Program, which provides qualifying second-stage companies with resources to identify and resolve distinct growth issues. The money, excuse me, the meeting was virtually located at Pale Fire Brewing in Harrisonburg, with entrepreneur Tim Grady thanking the Shenandoah Valley Partnership, the SBDC, economic development of Harrisonburg, and JMU for the assistance he received in locating his business in the old Ice House in Harrisonburg, downtown Harrisburg, Harrisonburg, and getting his business off the ground. The meeting also featured Stanton's own Peter Denby, co-founder with his wife Allison of the Stanton Innovation Hub, where he expects to announce this fall the completion of Phase Two of the co-working and shared resource space for entrepreneurs and nonprofits, bringing the total to nearly 30,000 square feet of space. Peter said that many major companies will be moving to a model of 50% of their employees working remotely. And he pointed out that with the connectivity that is offered at the hub, the cultural amenities offered in Stanton, our lower cost of living relative to large cities, and the opportunity to walk outside and enjoy our many beautiful natural assets, Stanton is a logical destination for high-tech industry workers. And finally, Executive Director Jay Langston announced that Shenandoah Valley Partnership will be focusing on improving the marketability of several high-potential development sites in the valley in the next year. One of those sites will be Stanton's Green Valley Industrial Park. Finally, I'm a member of the Central Shenandoah Valley Planning District's Agricultural Enterprise Center Feasibility Study Team, and we had our kickoff meeting this week with the consulting firm that's been engaged to assist with the projects. The initial ideas for the Ag Enterprise Center include a variety of things, a food hub, a commercial kitchen for food entrepreneurs, food lab and testing facility, flash freeze facility, meat processing, training and event space, a variety of different ag-related uses. And the study will culminate in a recommendation for infrastructure and location of that Ag Enterprise Center somewhere in the valley. And I hope we can be talking about making that location stand. That's it.
Well, you've been very busy. Are there any additional matters from city council members?
I've got one here.
All right, Councilman Holmes.
Yes, I'd just like to let everybody know that next Thursday at 6:30, 7:30 at the Bandstand, Ophi Kires is going to be, have his group there building bridges, just so anybody wants to come out as for helping out against racial issues. And it's, it's just a great event, you know, and if we can get out there and go and help support Ophi and all the work that he's done for racial equality.
All right, are there any additional?
Yeah. I just want to make a shout out. Last night, we got word that there was a major water main break on Greenville Avenue. Last night we got word that there was a major water main break on Greenville Avenue, basically from Hampton, I think, between Hampton and Gay. And I just, I went just to view, and I want to really give a shout out to our, our police, our fire department, and our Public Works workers. They did a fantastic job. They worked very, very hard getting it under control. And I just, you know, they were very professional and I just want to let them know that I appreciate everything that they did do and I appreciate their continued service to the city. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby.
I requested City Attorney Doug Wynn's assistance in drafting a statement regarding a public hearing on the Second Amendment issue. And I'm going to read that, but in summary, I believe a public hearing should be held on this matter. And once I finish reading this statement, I will give it to you to include in the record. So, as a new member of city council, I continue to be humbled by the privilege and honor of serving the citizens of Stanton by being part of this locally elected governing body. Now and in the future, as part of my service, it is my commitment to listen to our citizens, always seeking to understand before being understood. In this dedication of striving to listen and learn, I have continued to realize even more that we have citizens who have genuinely heartfelt sentiments about their constitutional rights under both the U.S. and Virginia constitutions. They understandably have a sense that at the local level, here in this room with us, there is a place where their voices will be heard by their elected representatives at a time when federal and state governments seem distant and remote to many. For me, that creates a powerful impetus and obligation for us to listen to all voices, including voices that make us stop and think and engage civilly with each other. In this abiding spirit of wanting to listen and learn, I continue to hear from those who are passionate about their Second Amendment rights, these hard-working, law-abiding, tax-paying citizens who deserve our respect, even when comments from diverse perspectives on the subject become robust and take us out of our comfort zones. As part of seeking to understand, I hope that as a council, we will find an appropriate time and place in the future when we recognize these voices and others and designate a specific time to reinforce that as a new council, we will listen through a dedicated, focused means that perhaps only a specific public hearing sometimes can offer. In this way, as a new city council, we demonstrate a renewed commitment to being open to ideas and views on such an important subject. Some might ask, why should we, why should we devote time to what is just one of the constitutional rights guaranteed, guaranteed to our citizens? I instead ask, why not? It is worth noting, too, that even U.S. Supreme Court Justice Thomas and other justices have continued to suggest that their highly informed public positions as jurists and scholars that Second Amendment rights wrongly are not accorded enough by the courts today the same level of protection of other constitutional rights. Moreover, with new laws being enacted in Richmond that relate to Second Amendment rights, it seems fitting that we, as a council at the local level, provide our citizens with a forum to discuss this subject further. I realize and appreciate that our authority as a city council under state law is limited as I continue to learn about what is called the Dillon Rule, but that does not mean that we should turn a deaf or numb ear to citizens' views on such an important subject as the Second Amendment and other subjects in times ahead. This council before has expressed its collective perspective on a variety of issues, for example, annually on state-controlled legislative issues and several occasions prominently on federal-controlled subjects such as environmental issues. So it seems no less appropriate that we might do so on other topics such as the Second Amendment, given our citizens' apparent sustained interest. In the end, we become more informed and we affirm a willingness to listen, to understand. And we might collectively conclude that there is a basis to consider a constructive, balanced resolution to acknowledge our regard for the Second Amendment rights of our citizens without going so far as to unrealistically create expectations over councils' limited rights under state and federal laws. So at some time in the future, it is my sincere hope that as a council, we might find a time and a place where we could hold a public hearing to give our citizens a renewed opportunity to express their views on the Second Amendment, just as we are doing tonight and in months ahead on a variety of what may be considered less profound subjects. And I pledge that the time, when the time comes, and even in the meantime, I will continue to listen and learn and become wiser from the views of all Stanton citizens in the subject of, in the spirit of respect for self-governed people engaged civilly in public discourse about public matters. Thank you.
Okay, with that.
This is Carolyn Doll. I had an event to report on the Augusta Health Quarterly Meeting with elected officials and administrators and staff as well. And I'd say the most important thing that I came away with, well, there were two things. One is that Augusta Health has done a wonderful job preparing for the pandemic and, and maintaining good relationships with outreach to nursing homes, long-term care facilities, the, the health department, they work closely together, and I have nothing but respect for the job that they've done. The other issue that they, that I think is really significant is that with the COPN, Augusta Health was approved for the CT scan but denied on the MRI. Meanwhile, Centerra had amended their application and moved their freestanding outpatient facility to Bridgewater, and they've been approved for both of them. In their application, it's clear that they expect to get 60% of their business from Augusta Health's catchment area. For those who, who know how important a community hospital is, this is a warning, it's a red flag. And even though Centerra is now going to supposedly, from what I've heard, buy Ryans and put in PT and a general practice, they are, they are determined to destroy Augusta
Okay, thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the organizational meeting minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
I, I'm not sure. I, I thought we were looking at first the organizational meeting minutes. I think that motion needs to be made again.
I did for the last meeting.
Well, we can go ahead and approve that one and then go back to the organization.
I think the issue is that Mr. Holmes read the motion to approve the agendas for the work session and the regular meeting, which we did at the beginning of the work session. So now we.
Would you like to amend that?
Now we need a motion to approve the organizational meeting minutes of July 1st.
I'd like to move to, to approve the organizational meeting of July 1st as presented.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the organizational meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Madam Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the work session and regular meeting minutes of July 9th, 2020.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes.
I move to approve the work session agenda and the regular meeting as presented.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second it.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Doll.
Aye.
Madam Oaks.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. We're still working out the kinks. All right, the next item on the regular meeting agenda is item A. It will be a public hearing and a consideration of a request by Breezy Hill of Stanton Two LLC to amend section 18.105.0201, Planned Residential Development of Chapter 18.105 Development Standards for Uses permitted on Review of Title 18, Zoning of the Stanton City Code by eliminating the minimum five-acre requirement for a planned residential development. Mr. Rhodes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Excuse me for one moment. Madam Mayor, you may wish to introduce the next item as well and let Mr. Rhodes adjust both of those.
I was going to have him do it separately.
Very good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. Before you tonight are actually three items regarding Breezy Hill Developments. The first item before you at this time is regarding the amendment to the city zoning code regarding the minimum acreage requirements. Currently, the zoning code states that the minimum lot size in order to apply for planned residential development is five acres. The developers of Breezy Hill are requesting that that be eliminated in order that they may proceed with the special use permit application that's also before you for public hearings tonight. And I'll go into that in more depth with the next public hearing. As far as what are the implications of eliminating that five-acre requirement? We may get additional applications for planned residential development, and that is probably a good thing. The regulations for the planned residential development are established for the intended purpose of providing optional methods of land development which encourage more imaginative solutions to environmental design problems. So I believe that anything we can do to encourage that type of development, we should. We may have some proposals before you that don't meet all of the requirements of planned residential development. However, since they all have to go through the special use permit process, they would all be reviewed by staff and by planning commission before city council took action on it. So you would have that input from staff and the commission before making that decision. So staff supports the proposed amendment to the city code. I'd be glad to take any questions to have this time or after the public hearing.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes at this time? Okay. Stay where you are, Mr. Rhodes. All right. Item number B, public hearing and consideration of a request by Breezy Hill of Stanton Two LLC for a special use permit to create a planned residential development at 123 Overlook Road under the provisions of SCC 18.105.020, Planned Residential Development of Chapter 18.105 Development Standards for Uses permitted on Review of Title 18, Zoning of the Stanton City Code. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Breezy Hill is a development located between Overlook Road and North Augusta Streets. It is zone P1 Professional District, and this development was initiated in 2008. The original proposal was to create 11 multifamily units that would be sold as condominiums. And back at that time, that is a by right use, so it did not need to go through any public hearings or planning commission or city council. The developer submitted a site plan for those 11 units that would be distributed among three buildings. That was approved, and with that approval, the developer applied for a building permit for the first three units, the first building, and for foundations for the remaining eight units. So I'm sure as anyone that has gone on, driven up Overlook, would note that those three units were completed about 12 years ago. The foundations, foundations were, were built about 12 years ago, and since that time, they have been basically abandoned. So this past year, the developer applied for the second building for the next four units, which would be multifamily under the current zoning. However, they made it clear that their intent was to apply for amendments to the zoning code and buy for planned residential development in order to sell these as individual townhouse lots. So those additional four units are almost completed at this point. And the reason why they are applying for planned residential development is because although townhouses are allowed by rights in that P1 district, they must have road frontage. And with the existing layout of the lots, the, the road access and the foundations, that is impossible to have at this time. So that is why they are applying for planned residential development with the amendments. And staff has reviewed the applications and supports this proposal. It provides additional flexibility to the developer. And as I noted before, planned residential developments would go before you on a case-by-case basis. The developer notes that the real estate market condominiums has declined and it's very difficult to sell them as condo units. And his attorney notes that the meeting, the legal requirements is also a very difficult process at this time. And in general, although this can, this property can be developed for multifamily units as is, in general, the city supports homeownership. And by creating townhouse lots, you would have homeownership for these next eight units. I would note that the proposed Breezy Hill planned residential development is in compliance with the underlying zoning regarding density, parking, setbacks, open space, they meet or exceed all those requirements. And the planning condition, planning commission conducted a public hearing on these two matters on June 18th, and on a five-to-o vote, recommended approval of both the amendment and the special use permit.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rhodes? Councilman Holmes.
I've just got one. With the lack of road frontage, everybody's still going to have their own driveway and everything like that, so they're, or are they going to do like a parking lot? How does that work?
Well, there would be one access, the current access that's on Overlook. That would provide ingress egress for all 11 units, and then they would have individual parking spaces in front of the unit, and also all the units are, have garages, I believe.
So it'd be kind of like a cul-de-sac or something.
Basically, yes.
Okay, are there any additional questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. At this time, we will have a public hearing. I will have one public hearing which will consist of, consist of item A and B. I will bang the gavel if you would like to speak on the matter. You have five minutes. Please come to the podium and state your name, your address. And we will also be accepting calls through Zoom. We will accept the calls on the public hearing through Zoom first, and then we will take individuals from the audience. With that, the public hearing is now open. And you may speak for or against. Yes, sir. Do we have anybody on Zoom?
We do not. We had, we had one caller, Madam Mayor, and they appear to have dropped off just as you opened the public hearing. So perhaps you'd like to proceed with in-person speakers and then we can see if anyone joins the queue to participate by telephone.
Sounds good. Welcome.
My name is Phil Miller, attorney, 128 West Beverly Street, Stanton. I represent the developers, John Dodd and Brett Ritchie. And I'm here to just answer any questions that you may have with regard to the project. It started 12 years ago. We had to do it by condos then. We much prefer to do it by townhouses.
Phil, what, what kind of timeframe are we looking at from completion, I mean, start to completion with these? with these next eight units?
Well, the next four are almost complete.
Okay.
And assuming that they sell quickly, and I do believe they will, they'll start immediately with the next four.
With the next four, okay.
There's gonna be no time lag whatsoever. The project was stopped because of the economy and because of the way that you had to see the financing with regard to condominiums.
Okay.
It's entirely different between financing condominiums and financing for townhouses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there any additional comments to be made during this public hearing? Hearing none, I will now close the public hearing. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve Item A, Consideration of a Request by Breezy Hill of Stanton Two LLC to amend Section 18.105.0201, Planned Residential Development of Chapter 18.105, Development Standards for Uses permitted on Review of Title 18, Zoning of the Stanton City Code by eliminating the minimum five-acre requirement for a planned residential development.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the consideration of the request by Breezy Hill of Stanton Two LLC to amend the Section 18.105.020, Planned Residential Development of Chapter 18.105, Development Standards of Uses permitted on Review of Title 18, Zoning on the Stanton City Code by eliminating the minimum five-acre requirement for a planned residential development.
You need to do the second one.
Is that motion acceptable?
I think that that motion addressed the issue. Give me just one moment, a few words. Yeah, I think that's fine.
You could say "in addition."
In addition, I move the council approve the zoning code amendment and adopt the ordinance as presented and recommended by the planning commission.
That's a lot easier.
So can.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. That takes us to Item B, Consideration. I will accept a motion with the consideration of a request by Breezy Hill of Stanton Two LLC for a Special Use Permit to Create a Planned Residential Development at 123 Overlook Road under the provision of SCC 18.105.020, Planned Residential Development of Chapter 18.105, Development Standards for Uses permitted on Review of Title 18, Zoning of the Stanton City Code.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes?
I move the council approve the special use permit to create a planned residential development at 123 Overlook Road as recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to Item Number C, Consideration of a Final Plat for Lot Two of the Breezy Hill LLC properties. Mr. Rhodes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council members. I won't go back through the history of Breezy Hill, which just acted on the special use permit. The plat before you would create eight additional lots. As noted before, it's Zone P1 Professional District. It's approximately 1.32 acres with a residue lots of approximately two-thirds acres, which would be the common area, and include the required open space. It's actually about twice the required open space for a PRD. It is in, with the adoption of the company's zoning tax amendment, the plat is in conformance with the requirements of the zoning and subdivision ordinance. The planning commission considered this final plat at their June 18, 2020 meeting, and on a five-to-zero vote, recommend approval of plat with the following conditions: any additional facility fees shall be paid, and a signed maintenance agreement must be submitted for maintenance of the private utilities. And I would note, Public Works has determined that no additional facility fees are required with this development, and we do have a signed maintenance agreement that I believe has already been reported. I'd be glad answering questions you have at this time. The developer is here, along with his attorney. If you have any questions for him.
Okay. Are there any questions by council members? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to, for the consideration of a final plat for Lot Two of the Breezy Hill LLC properties.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Darby?
I move the council approve the final plat for Lot Two of Breezy Hill LLC property as recommended by the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? All right, we have a second. Councilman Holmes, any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. That takes us to Item Number D, which is the consideration of an ordinance amending Section 3.05.080 of the Stanton City Code to increase courthouse security fee from $10 to $20. Ms. Beauregard, I believe you're handling this.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So you all, we first introduced this item at the July 9 meeting, and there was also a public hearing held. So this, tonight, the action is to consider the ordinance that's in front of you. And just as a quick review, the General Assembly enacted legislation during the last session that would authorize us to increase the courthouse security fee from $10 to $20 against a convicted defendant. The assessment is used solely for courthouse security personnel. It can also be used for equipment and other personal property that would assist with connection, that's connected with courthouse security. You have several attachments with this, including the presentation that was provided at last at the meeting two weeks ago, along with a letter from Sheriff Robertson that supports this increase. And he is also here tonight, I believe, to answer any questions, should you have any of him. And I'll, of course, could answer any questions as well. And I'd just like to note, we had tried to obtain some demographic data from the Supreme Court of Virginia. I never heard back from them. The gentleman I spoke to on Tuesday said, it might be yesterday, but he wasn't sure, and I did not receive that information. So I'm, well, I'm sorry that we cannot get that for you, but it never came through us. So, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or comments from council members? Councilman Holmes?
Yes. Do we have any, how many first offenders are involved, or is that part of the information you was hoping to get?
The information we were hoping to get was more around, like, the demographics of the individuals. I don't know the answer to that question, though, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any additional questions or comments? Ms. Beauregard. So this fee is subject to convicted defendants only?
Correct.
All right. Were there any questions for Sheriff Robertson by council?
Did we ever assess how this would be, this money would be spent?
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, yes, but thank you for reminding me. There is a budget amendment included in this packet as well. And I'll just remind you that it's for 11 months, not the entire fiscal year, since this would not become effective until, it would be for 11 months. Right now, it's set aside for salaries. And again, it's for courthouse security.
I do have, I do have another question, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Sheriff's Office still isn't on the Cronus system of payroll, are they? Do you know, do you know, Sheriff?
We are not as of right now.
Are you planning to go onto that system? Do you have a date?
I've got a memorandum of agreement that Mr. Rosenberg sent me today, and I have looked it over, have signed it. I have not, I didn't bring it nice to give to him. I was gonna take it to him tomorrow morning.
Yeah, 'cause you know, if, say, if one of your persons, one of your sheriffs quit and filed a grievance against us, or against you, we would, the city would be responsible because we didn't have accurate records that, you know, which the Cronus would provide us. So it would be, it would be really in your favor to get onto that system.
I agree, and we, rest assured that we keep very accurate records as far as timekeeping. You know, we don't, as of right now, we don't have an overtime budget, so all of our overtime gets converted to comp time, which we track very, very vigorously. So it's hard to let my people off because we're, for that comp time, because we're kind of short-staffed. But I look forward to talking to Mr. Rosenberg tomorrow, along him, along with Dodd then, and getting this thing taken care of.
Well, how many people would you say you're down? I mean, do you consider yourself to be down as far as sheriffs?
So the comp board gives us a, based on staffing standards, which is low for every department, and then localities usually supplement that to, they supplement manpower as well as salaries, because the comp board just puts down a deputy, the comp board's salary for a deputy in Stanton is the same for a deputy in Fairfax. However, starting pay for a deputy in Fairfax is right around $75,000. So the city of Fairfax supplements those to get them up because of, due to cost of living, and obviously, it's cost more to live in Fairfax. We had a, years ago, I think it was 2005, 2006, we had a courtroom assessment team come by our courthouse. They traveled all over the states, all over the country, due to a circuit court judge being shot and killed in Georgia. A man got in, took a deputy's gun, and shot and killed the judge, and shot and killed the deputy. They formulated this courtroom assessment team, and they went around, at the time, that was 2006, with our workload, with the prisoners that we deal with, transportation that we deal with, they recommended we have 12 deputies, full-time deputies in Stanton. We got, including myself, excluding my secretary, there's seven full-time deputies and one part-time deputy. So we're short-staffed. I sent y'all a letter with some statistics in it. I think they, and I only went back to 2013. I think it very well states the increases that we've seen and then what we are dealing with. One of the things I do want to point out is, you know, as courts are starting to take on more and more cases due to this coronavirus, and they're there for a while, we were kind of limited on what we could do. We are having more in-person cases now. I'll give you an example, last, Wednesday before the last council meeting, we had 200, no, how many cases was it? It was 222 cases, that's what it was. And that's relatively low for a general district court day. We have two deputies in the courtroom that deal with that, and everybody usually just goes into the courtroom and sits down. We had to utilize three different courtrooms in order to keep social distancing. We had to separate everybody according to officer, and then as that officer came up, we would bring that group of people down from the two courtrooms that we have upstairs in order to hear their cases. That court day took five deputies to run that one court, because I had to have one person at the metal detector scanning for contraband coming in, i.e., cell phones, guns, weapons, things of that nature, and one taking temperatures and asking the necessary appropriate questions. Have you been out of the state? Have you been, have you been around anybody that's, you know, had the coronavirus? So on, so on. And then one deputy up in the second floor, just to monitor the people upstairs that we had to separate. So, you know, as things start to open back up and cases are starting to increase, the need for manpower is paramount right now.
Would it be possible, if you're having to take temperatures, to have somebody that's not necessarily an officer, but maybe like your secretary or somebody like that who could take the temperatures and ask those questions? Maybe that would relieve a little bit of your manpower. And then, my biggest concern is if you raise this, I know a lot of people who will get in to make, they'll make one or two stupid mistakes, and they'll get to the point where they can't pay their money, 'cause it's either pay their rent or pay their fees. You know, a lot of them, over the years, have lost their license, which makes it even harder for them to pay their fees, you know? So I just worry about raising these fees, and then, and then the percentage they're charged when they don't pay them on time and all that stuff, it could really escalate into a lot of money, you know? And that's a concern of mine.
Well, you know, these fees, Councilman Holmes, is not, there's a myriad of fees involved in this.
Right, I know that.
They're not all mine.
I know that, I know that.
So out of the total court cost that people get assessed for doing something, is, my part is very, very tiny compared to everything else that, you know, it all adds up.
So is the security fee the only fee that goes to your office?
Yes, that fee is, that fee is controlled by Virginia Code. It goes for the use of sheriff's office.
And the rest of the fees go to other different things?
Yes. There's an e-summons fee. I don't know right off the top of my head what it is, but because the police officers now write, they don't, back when I was on the police department, you know, you had to handwrite all the tickets. Now they just punch it in on a computer in their car, and they have a little printer in their car, and it prints the summons out, and they just take it up and have them sign it. So there's an e-summons fee, and, wish I'd have brought that paper with me, but it describes everything, but there's, there's a lot involved in a court cost, in the fees in that, in that court cost.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Sheriff, can you, can you give me the local, I mean, what the local communities around, surrounding us have done?
So Stanton, I mean, no, sorry, Waynesboro and Augusta have already implemented this. They've already, they've already passed this. I've called some other localities, kind of, kind of like ours. Salem Sheriff's Office has adopted this. Rockbridge and Lexington, of course, are combined courts, so they're, they, they've already adopted it, and it goes into effect August the 1st. Winchester has, I believe, passed it, I was told it passed, and, or it's gonna pass at their next meeting. Highland County has adopted it. Bass County has adopted it. I've not heard back from Rockingham. I've put three phone calls into Rockingham, and I'm not hearing anything back from them.
Okay, thank you. Sheriff Robertson?
Yes.
Do you know whether or not our local judges in this area are in support of this measure?
Mayor Oaks, judges are, they're not going to weigh in. This matter is now, since it has become political, they're not going to weigh in on that because they're forbidden to do so. They're just not going to get involved with political matters.
Fair enough.
Mayor Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead?
Yeah, I'd just like to review some of the public input that we received on this issue. The comments from a public hearing on July 9th, that we had seven individuals speaking against adoption of these fees. We had one speaking for adoption, one asking for more information. And of those nine folks, three stated that they believe Vice Mayor Robertson should recuse himself from the conversation and the vote. And I also want to add that we received over 65 emails from citizens with comments on the proposed amendment to increase the courthouse fee prior to the July 9th meeting. Of those comments, 25 citizens expressed outright opposition to the fee increase. 45 expressed the need for more information. And 45 citizens expressed the thought that Vice Mayor Robertson should recuse himself from the vote to avoid any appearance of a conflict of interest because the sheriff is his brother, and by his own public statements, was actively involved in advising him and campaigning for his election to city council. I'd like to hear what Mark Robertson has to say on that issue.
Vice Mayor Robertson, it's your choice if you want to answer.
Yeah. I tell you what, I have asked our city attorney, Doug Gwynn, to weigh in on this. If he would, I would appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I have advised Vice Mayor Robertson, in my opinion, he does not have a conflict of interest and may vote, just as any other council member.
Thank you.
I'd also like to make a couple of other comments. At the July 9th meeting, from the approved minutes of the July 9th meeting, work session meeting, excuse me. Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Phil Trayer, noted that clerk of, the clerk of Circuit Court, Stacy Falls, indicated that approximately 45% of the circuit court staff's time was dedicated toward the assessment and collection of court fees, just like the one we're talking about now. And that approximately 25% of the juvenile and domestic court staff's time was engaged in collecting and assessing fees. Today, we learned that the clerk of court employs seven people with a total annual salary and benefits budget of $506,356. If the office of the clerk is spending 45% of their time assessing and collecting fees, that comes to $227,860 that the taxpayers of Stanton are paying for the assessment and collection of court fees. That's an astounding number. And if you're a businessperson, I can't imagine how you can say that that is not a grossly inefficient way to finance courthouse operations. And I'd also like to point out that I sent the members of city council several weeks ago information that includes studies on the, on the, the collection of fees to support courthouse operations. In a study published in 2019 by the Brennan Center for Justice, they found that fees and fines are an inefficient source of government revenue. The counties they studied spent more than 41 cents of every dollar of revenue they raised from fees and fines on in-court hearings and jail costs alone. That's 121 times what the Internal Revenue Service spends to collect taxes, and many times what the states themselves spend to collect taxes. The resources devoted to collecting and enforcing fees and fines could be better spent on efforts that actually improve public safety. And I would submit that rather than assessing these fees, if the sheriff needs more staff, we take some from the clerk of court and reduce the expense that they incur in assessing and collecting fees. It's just so incredibly inefficient and makes no sense at all. And then I'd also like to point out that judges don't hold hearings to assess defendant's ability to pay. And as a result, the burden of fees and fines falls largely on the poor, minorities, those with substance abuse issues, and people with intellectual disabilities. It's a lot like a regressive tax. And billions of dollars of these fees go unpaid each year, and they're an extremely unreliable source of government revenue. Collections are often referred to agencies and result in negative impacts to the credit scores of offenders, impacting their ability to obtain housing, financing for vehicles, and resulting in significantly higher insurance costs. The result is often homelessness, children in foster care systems, and higher drug and alcohol addiction and suicide rates. It's just, I know you all think I'm nuts for making a big deal out of a $10 fee increase on a $10 fee, but it's just the injustice of it. You might think I'm jousting at windmills, but I think this is an opportunity for the city of Stanton to do something in a small way to say that we care about all of our citizens, and that this is an unjust means of collecting revenues to support courthouse operations.
Are there any other comments?
One other thing. As far as, oh, Matt, yeah. The state assesses you, that you would have like seven officers, right? For this city of this size?
Well, actually five, including myself.
Okay.
Okay. Hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to consider an ordinance amending Section 3.05.080 of the Stanton City Code to increase courthouse security fee from $10 to $20.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Claffey?
I move the council to adopt ordinance to increase the courtroom security fee from $10 to $20, effective August 1st, 2020, and adopt an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2021 budget by adding Budget Amendment Number 1, totaling $41,250 for courtroom security as presented.
Right, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, a second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? So go ahead, Councilman Holmes.
I'm sorry, I just think it's a large amount to increase. I mean, it's doubling the thing, and, I mean, we called hell for doubling, I mean, you know, for increasing the water by 5% and stuff like that. And I mean, this is 100%. I just think it is penalizing people that don't have the money to pay anymore.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Claffey?
Tonight, I want to make confirm that there's a significant difference between a tax on all citizens versus a fee imposed only on convicted violators of the law. The issue of raising security fees is a cost borne only by convicted person. If the incremental forecasted $45,000 that we would increase yearly is not raised by charging the convicted felon or personnel, it would have to be paid by the citizens of Stanton. The honest, law-abiding citizens would have to pay for the court services. So let's have the violators pay for the services they require. Let's not charge the rest of Stanton. If a convicted person is unable to pay, community service can be arranged, and a default payment plan can also be set up. If you don't want to pay the fine, don't commit the crime. I will support the fee increase.
Are there any other comments?
This is Carolyn Doll.
Councilwoman Doll?
And using that same analogy, if you don't want to pay the fee, don't use the water. Or if you, you know, if you don't want to pay the fee, don't use the sewer or the trash. Yeah, I think that's kind of a false argument. But I will say that the overwhelming response from the people, and I think the newer council members have pledged that they're going to listen to the people. Well, the people overwhelmingly said, "Don't raise these fees." So I'll be voting no.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor Oaks, I just want to repeat for the business people in the room that the cost of collecting these fees annually in just the circus court, circuit court, is $227,860. So if you think that these convicted felons and other people are paying for court operations, you know, the city of Stanton, the people of Stanton are paying that $227,000 a year to collect these fees. So that, I mean, that's just, that's just bad business.
Sorry, Councilman Holmes.
Do we have any idea how much these fees are a year?
Yes, right now, they're figuring it at $45,000 a year. And by doubling it, it's going to $90,000.
So, and, but we're spending $200,000 to collect it?
That's unsubstantiated.
No, that is not unsubstantiated. We received the information about the clerk of circuit court salary today. I don't know whether you got your emails, but that was, that was shared with us by the city manager. And Phil Trayer said in the July 9th meeting, which was, those minutes were approved today as well, that that clerk spends 45% of her time collecting and assessing these fees. It's just bad business.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Darby?
And Ms. Bowe Guard, I don't know if you know, but this, this came to us and all the other localities, some that's already approved and some that haven't taken action yet. Sounds like just a few. Because it was passed through the general assembly and signed off by the governor.
Correct, we provided us authorization to do so.
Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. This is not a public hearing. This is just discussion for the council members. We've already had the public hearing at the last meeting. So, I'm sorry. If you would like to wait and speak under Matters from the Public, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments from, are there any other comments from city council members? I would like to say that a water fee is, water is a necessity. Committing a crime is not a necessity. I'm, I'm sorry. We're in the midst of a vote right now, so I'm going to have to ask you to wait until Under Matters from the Public to speak. So again, water is a necessity, committing a crime is not. This fee, it's only to convicted defendants. It's not for the general taxpayers of Stanton. You can look at it as a user fee. The court would not have to come together if not for the crime being committed. So it's a user fee, it's a deterrent fee, if you will. But the point is, it is not for the general law-abiding citizens that pay taxes in the city. Also, you talk about it affects the low-income minority as well as the intellectually disabled. Well, there are a lot of victims that the convicted defendants commit crimes against, victims that are low-income, that are minority, that are intellectually disabled. They have had a crime committed against them because this is a convicted defendant that has to pay this. We are going to turn around and ask the victim to pay this fee on top of having a crime against them? Because we would have to pull this from the general fund. And where does the general fund money come from? The taxpayers. I am going to consider the victim in this situation. And our courts are bringing in more cases and are becoming more at risk, which puts our judges and our police at risk. I am going to consider the safety of our courthouse. Hearing no other comments. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
No.
Ms. Darby?
Hi.
Ms. Doll?
No.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Motion fails?
No, I believe it passes by a 4 to 3 margin, Madam Mayor.
Motion passes. All right, that takes us to the next item on the agenda. That is Item E, a consideration of an uncodified emergency ordinance concerning utility bills, utility disconnection, and parking fees. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, you have an ordinance before you this evening that would extend temporary relief to businesses and residents that was first enacted by council on March 26, 2020. The emergency relief addressed two different subjects that are relevant to the discussion this evening. The first concerned utility payments and disconnection suspensions. And the second concerned parking fees. With respect to the utility payments and disconnections, the relief originally implemented on March 26 did two things. First, it provided for an interest rate of 0% and a $0 penalty for water charges incurred for the billing periods between March 10th and June 10th, as long as customers made payment in full by July 10th. And similarly, it provided for the suspension of water disconnections for the same period, March 18th through July 10th. Concerning parking fees, the relief provided for the suspension of parking fees at city-owned parking facilities, including the New Street Parking Garage, the Johnson Street Parking Garage, the Warf Parking Lot, and the Augusta Street Parking Lot during the period of March 18th through April 23rd. And as I noted for you during your last meeting, though the April 23rd date has long since come and gone, we did not resume the implementation of parking fees at any of those facilities in the days since. So when we met on July 9th, we initiated a conversation with you about the possible extension of these relief measures. And the consensus among council was to extend all of them and bring them to an end as of August 10th of 2020. And so the ordinance that is before you this evening would do just that. It would continue and extend the 0% interest rate and the $0 penalty for water fees for the billing periods of March 10th, 2020, through July 10th, 2020, provided payment is made in full on or before August 10th, 2020. And it would continue our suspension of disconnections for the period of March 18th, 2020, through August 10th of 2020. And as we indicated to you at the... And as we indicated to you at the last meeting, we will entertain requests for payment plans with these customers. As noted previously, we have 547 delinquent accounts. We've past due payments totaling about $105,000. And for comparison purposes, for the same period last year, we had 91 delinquent accounts compared to 547, and the aggregate amount was $11,000 versus the $105,000. So you can see that as we continue with these relief measures, were they not to come to an end, these totals would increase. So our recommendation is to move forward with the adoption of the ordinance, but we will work with customers on payment plans, as has been the case pre-pandemic. And then concerning the parking fees, we would resume the collection of those parking fees at those named facilities as of August 11th. Thank you.
Are there any questions, Councilman Holmes?
Is there any way that we could use any of this COVID-19 money to, to help people with their water bills?
No, we can't, because that is basically, we can't use it for revenue loss, so that's considered revenue loss. It's very clear about that.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I'd like to make a motion. I move that council adopt an ordinance extending suspension of utility disconnection and applicable penalties through the end of business on August 10th, 2020, and continuing suspension of parking fees in all city lots, also through August 10th, 2020, as presented.
Here we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I'll second it.
Councilman Claffey has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
Hi.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is Item F, a consideration of the FY 2020 Annual Action Plan relating to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, Community Development Block Grant Program for the City of Stanton as a HUD entitlement community. Mr. Vaughn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. Earlier tonight, I shared with you the fact that the city's moving to its second year as a HUD entitlement community, whereby we would receive an annual allocation to address low modern, low modern income individual issues. In order to receive that annual allocation, the city must prepare an annual action plan, which council must adopt. During the work session, our HUD consultant, Jessica Lurz, from M&amp;L, provided a very detailed presentation on how the funds will be spent through using some of the nonprofits and preparing or developing or installing sidewalks and improving water service to several neighborhoods. If you'd like, Jessica's still on the line, she could go over that information, or we could just address any questions that council might have about the plan.
Council members, do you have any questions?
This is Carolyn Doll. I would like to reiterate, reiterate my statement that even though our city attorney told me I don't have a conflict of interest, he also said it's always wise to remove any appearance of impropriety or the appearance of a conflict of interest. And so I will be recusing myself from any discussion and voting on this issue, as my brother is the executive director of Blue Ridge Legal Services. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Jessica or Lurz? Did I pronounce it right?
Lurz.
Lurz, my apologies, as well as Mr. Vaughn.
Madam Mayor, no questions, just thank you for the thorough information. I found it very helpful.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to...
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Holmes?
I move to adopt the FY 2020 Annual Action Plan and authorize the city manager to execute the sub-procipient agreements with agencies recommended to receive HUD, CDBG funds.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor Robertson has seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
She's abstaining.
She's abstaining.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to just state that there are several certification forms that you will need to sign so that we can submit.
I'll be happy to do it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work on this. All right, the next item, it's Item G, a consideration of Council Procedure Memorandum Number Five, Grant Applications. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor and members of council, the item before you is a proposed modification to your Council Procedure Memorandum Number Five. This was reaffirmed with a modification by council at its organizational meeting on July 1st, and the modification at the time was to require that all grant applications, not only those which required a local match, be presented to and approved by city council before their approval. At your last meeting on July 9th, I shared with you a couple of examples where this proved to be a bit problematic for the reason that we learned of some very, of some grant opportunities with some very short turnaround times that did not permit staff to bring grant applications to council prior to their submission. And in fact, one of those has been added to your agenda for your retroactive approval this evening. So what ensued at your last meeting was a discussion amongst council members and in which I participated. And I have proposed revisions to your procedure that I believed were consistent with those discussions, so that what is proposed now is to revert to the prior procedure that would allow me, a city manager, to submit grant applications that do not require a local match, provided I report to council concerning those unmatched grant applications within a certain period of time after their submission. And so, again, I tried to capture what I understood to be the consensus of council as, as stated at that meeting on July 9th, and that's what you have before you this evening for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Do any of the city council members have questions for Mr. Rosenberg? Any comments?
I, I know that I was the perpetrator of this, but at this time, I really, after thinking about it, I would like city council to take no action on this and leave memorandum number five as we originally approved it back on July 1, and take no action at this time, and simply have city manager, if it comes, it's close, just simply reach out to us for email or some kind of, and, and just have us, give us a, you know, a heads up as we see, and then we can approve, approve that measure at the very next meeting. That's my, that's my desire.
Okay. Mr. Rosenberg. Being able to vote on the grant issues retroactively, is that an issue?
I can't say, Madam Mayor, categorically that it is not an issue. I, I believe that Mr. Gwynne would say that it's a legally effective step, but I can't say to you that every grant, I can't say to you that, that a particular grant agency, granting agency might not look at that and, and flag it as an issue. So there's a difference, I think, between its legal effect by the locale, or for purposes of the locality, and whether it's acceptable to, to the grant, to a granting agency.
Would you be able to send the email out, as Vice Mayor Robertson suggested?
If, if it's council's desire that that's how we handle these things, I'm sure that we can, you, you know, we can attempt to make that work, and if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay. Councilman Holmes?
I just, I just think that, you know, that it, you're giving us money, and it's, we don't have to pay anything to it, so I don't see why there'd be any problem with letting them go ahead and file for the grant, you know, and then just notify us of it. It'd be different if we were having to put matching funds up, but not putting matching funds up, I don't, I don't see, I can't see any case where we would want to send the money back, you know? That's, that's the thing I just don't understand. I mean, it just, like, it, it's not clear to me. I don't, I don't understand it. I, I think we should go ahead with the motion.
All right, are there any additional comments?
This is Councilwoman Mead.
Councilwoman Mead.
I, I believe that the council procedure memorandum that, that Mr. Rosenberg provided in our packet is what we agreed on at our work session previously, and it, it says exactly what was originally proposed, and that is, or the, in the original procedure memorandum, and is that is that if, if the city has no matching requirement, that the city manager has the authority, as the CEO of the city, to submit grant applications to provide for funding for various projects in the city, and that subsequently, city council would be notified, and that effectively, voting on it retroactively is, is the same thing. So, so, you know, it just makes no sense whatsoever.
Well, it just seems to me that we could possibly lose out on a grant. And Mark, what, what, I don't understand, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
It's all right, come on, Mark.
You know, what's the, what is, what do you see with the problem of doing it the way we've always done it? I mean, is, I mean, does it?
It's like I said, and I, maybe it's, maybe it's my upbringing, I, you know, that's just, in my mind, you know, I, we were elected to guard the people's money.
It's not...
And I know, and I know Ms. Mead said, and told me, and I respect, Brenda, I respect your feeling, and you said, well, it's not really the people's money. Yes, it is. It's tax money that was sent to state, it's tax money that was sent to the federal government. Anywhere you get it, it's the people's money.
But sometimes it's actually money from institutions and, and different things like that. I mean, you know, I mean, it might, so I, I mean, I, I tell you, we've done so many things in this city with matching grants or, or with just regular grants. It's been able to help us keep a lot of things going when we didn't have the money.
And I really think we can continue to do that. I mean, I just don't see this causing it, like, all of a sudden, we're not going to get any matching grants or get any, I just don't see it.
Mr. Gwynne? Vice Mayor Robertson has suggested that we leave the Procedure Memorandum Number Five as is, as voted on July 1st. So no action would need to be taken? Do we just simply do a head nod?
No, no, no.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Councilman Holmes?
I move that council adopt the revised Council Procedure Memorandum Number Five as presented.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second. This is Councilwoman Mead.
All right, Councilwoman Mead has seconded. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
No.
Ms. Doll?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks?
No.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
No.
Motion fails. Right?
Motion fails, yes, that is correct. All right, our next item is Item H, Virginia Tourism Corporation Wonder Love Grant. Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, Ms. Beauregard will present this item.
Actually, Katie, though.
I'm sorry.
Katie Campbell is here. My apologies.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of council. I'm here on behalf of the Tourism Office in regard to our application and subsequent award of $10,000 for Virginia Tourism Corporation's Wonder Love Grant Program. The application deadline was July 2nd, and the Tourism Office received notice of the grant award on July 14th from the Virginia Tourism Corporation. Just to give you a little background, the Wonder Love Grant Program was established to provide marketing funds to tourism offices throughout the Commonwealth that have been impacted by the novel coronavirus pandemic. The Tourism Office will use these funds to promote our city as a safe and welcoming destination for travelers planning a road trip in Virginia. The grant funds will support the Tourism, Tourism Office's own Wonder Love marketing campaign as we re-enter the marketplace to help drive economic activity and travel to our area. There is no additional fiscal impact to the city by accepting these grant funds, and we thank you for your time and consideration on this matter.
All right.
If there are any questions you have at this time.
Are there any questions for Ms. Campbell?
Does anyone have any estimate of the amount of staff time to present this briefing and for Katie Campbell to come and present this? Any kind of guesstimate on total staff time involved in this?
It's Councilwoman Doll.
Madam, Madam Mayor, members of council, there's been no effort to try to quantify the, the value of the effort.
Would that be something that could be done in the future for all of these grants, that we're going to retroactively decide if we're going to accept the money or not?
That would be an individual request by Councilwoman Doll. All right, any other comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the Virginia Tourism Corporation Wonder Love Grant.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Claffey.
I move that city council authorize staff to apply for and accept the Wonder Love Grant through the Virginia Tourism Corporation.
We have a motion by Councilman Claffey. Is there a second?
And I second.
We have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion?
Yes, this is Carolyn Doll. That motion's not accurate because they've already applied for and accepted. This has gone out from the state, the award's already been announced. So shouldn't the motion say something like, I move that city council approve the, what staff applied for and, and receive?
Retroactively approve.
Or something.
Mr. Gwynne?
We have not signed the acceptance letter yet, just so you know.
The acceptance letter has not been accepted, has not been signed. Okay, all right. Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Doll?
Not as, not as written, no.
Mayor Oaks?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Hi.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is Matters from the City Manager. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing for council this evening.
All right, next on the agenda is Matters from the Public. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, your address. You have five minutes to speak. Please address the council as a whole. Please... Please address the council as a whole, please refrain from any insults towards any individual council members, and please note profanity. We will be having our Zoom callers first, and then we will accept members from the audience to speak under matters from the public.
Madam Mayor, at the present time, I don't see any callers by telephone to participate in matters from the public.
All righty. That means you may address us, and with your buddy.
Hi, 41 North Augusta Street.
And, and your name?
Mary.
I'm sorry, Mary, what's your last name?
Lane.
Mary Lane, okay, thank you.
Yes, this is my first council meeting, he is a marine dog in training. I agree with Mr. Robertson, this, I've never been to a meeting like this, so apologies if I don't get the protocol right. But I care deeply about where our tax money is going, so I saw Mr. Robertson mentioning that before, and I just wanted to express the fact that I'm clearly under the age of 50, and am very jex, and very concerned about that, also with the parking relief and the towing relief. My car was towed by the police, and it cost me $500. There was not a great sign in the Frederick, in the Frederick House parking lot, there was just like a piece of paper that was posted. I would appreciate if there's some sort of relief for that kind of thing happening. I am, I was able to pay upfront for my cost, but I can imagine that there might be people of my age who could not have paid upfront. My car is actually only valued at about $500, so my husband joked that it was essentially the cost of the car to get it out of the parking lot, and it felt a bit like Lucy with the football, where the police department was saying, oh, well, you know, you need to get your car back from XYZ company, but then XYZ company, I can give you their name if you want, were saying, oh, well, you need to actually talk to the police department about that. And so it was a bit of a, I was, I was unsure about whom to talk to. I'm really glad that I came to a meeting like this, to see how local govern, governors work, because I've always voted locally. I lived for 10 years abroad in Germany, and I'm really proud of the fact that I've always voted even absentee, and this past election was the first time I voted in person in Stanton, and I found the process really efficient and lovely, but that was just something I wanted to mention. I will now yield the floor to whoever wants to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, are there any other matters from the public?
Can y'all see that?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Aaron Barner, 312 Fayette Street, Stanton. Okay, since you haven't been polite enough, or businesslike enough, to reply formally by the format that was sent to you, email, or even just a phone call, since you got my number, you have my email address, Mr. Rosenberg, Ms. Beauregard, and her council. You're Stanton City Council, we've been demonstrating, we've been participating in demonstrations outside of Stonewall Jackson Hotel for the last, well, actually, five weeks now. Our goal is to change the name of the hotel, and have the sign removed or updated. We are seeking a rename that will be both welcoming and absent of a specter of racial oppression. The hotel's general manager, Damon Strickland, informed us that the man, the owners have decided to change the name of the property. He was sure to mention that he was uncertain about the removal of the sign, noting the quote-unquote "historical relevance." We understand that the city may have a say in these changes due to its financial ties to the hotel. We want to be sure that the city will not be an obstacle to the removal or alteration of the rooftop sign. Will you release a statement of support for these changes? Five weeks later, will you expedite any efforts that need to be made by the city to ensure that these changes happen quickly? When we hear that people have been told not to talk to us, why is that, five weeks later? Okay? We would like to see an official announcement from the city. Okay? Outstanding debt for the Stonewall Jackson Hotel, $7,799, excuse me, $7,798,000, or 9.4% of all of Stanton's total debt. Now, something like that sounds like it should rise to the level of an official statement. When you're dodging reporters, when you're dodging your constituents, and you're only allowing a private business to rely on a feeble Facebook post, this is how you respond to it? I, I hear that the business meeting earlier, there was no action on anything that could be done for racial equity in Stanton. This is a softball for y'all to hit. So somebody here, Mr. City Manager, Ms. Assistant City Manager, should be able to explain to the public what the entanglement is with Stanton Hotel LLC, and why there is no action down there, that place, to remove that sign. This building has a say-so, and if you're going to leave that up there, let me tell you one thing, this all-white city council and city manager's office is going to have a headache every day of its term. Get out front of this, reply formally to aqbarmer@gmail.com. If you need a copy of the original notice that was sent to you, the one I was just reading from, any one of these city council members up here, Mr. Holmes, the mayor, of, of Councilwoman Dahl, and Councilman Oakes, also have a copy of that letter. I'm sorry, gentlemen, you were excluded. If I have to resend it, and I don't hear from you in five weeks, we will come and stand outside of your offices and your homes until there's action. Do you understand? Five weeks of no comment about why Stonewall Jackson is still flying above this town? Y'all have a nice evening, take it down.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the public?
I'd love to hear your response.
This is, when the public speaks to us, it's not a, they merely speak to us, it's not a conversation time.
Yes, my name is Bowen Jennings, 332 Sharon Lane, Stanton. I've been a first-asset supervisor all my adult life. I'm 82 years old. I was brought up in the military, and at the end of my military career, I worked 15 years in 10 months for a state, and retired from the state. I want y'all to know that through Mayor Andrew Oakes, that you got an outstanding leader. I know what leadership is all about, and she, I've been following her since she's on the school board, probably 12, 14, maybe 15 years now, and she is an outstanding leader. You new members, you're just like you did tonight, stay in, stay with her, she will not lead you wrong, she is an outstanding citizen, and she's for this town. I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments from citizens?
Hi, Nitch Narduzzi, 130 South Jefferson Street. I just want to go over a few things. I typically listen to the work session and city council meeting online. I think it's prudent for us all to practice the safest social justice measures that we can, and I've been privileged to be able to do that from home. But this evening, when I was listening to the work session, there were several things that came up that compelled me to come here in person, to speak to you face-to-face about. The first would be item two, and of the Hutt Community Grant. I would just like for you to consider for future annual allocations, to actually focus on transitional housing. This is a major concern for a lot of our community members, not just our homeless community members, people that are trying to reintegrate after hospitalizations in mental health institutions, and also our returning citizens that are just as involved. So transitional housing should be at the top of your list for future considerations on this matter. You also spoke in the work meeting about the golf course. I'm not for sure why this was prioritized, but I think that setting aside an outside consultant is a prudent stewardship of our taxpayer dollars, as long as you do actively pursue a diverse citizen task force, that includes more than just the few current consumers of the services of the golf course. I really don't care about how many white, privileged people get around a golf. I care about equitable distribution of taxpayer dollars to serve as many citizens as possible with the least amount of money. I would also like a public apology from some of the council members who participated in dishonest dissemination of information about the golf course, saying that our previous city council and myself, because I was briefed in with that as your opponent, wanted to turn the golf course into an Arbor read-on. That was not true. You paid to have that printed and sent out to our community members, so I would, you can't apologize for that untruth, at least set the record straight for the rest of our community members, so that they know that that was never, ever a consideration from previous city council. Let's see, there were a lot of items during the work session. Base coverings. I look forward to the video proposed, where all council members are on record demonstrating their support of the most stringent public health measures possible at all times, not just inside certain buildings and establishments. This should include Vice Mayor Robertson's retraction of a public statement, saying that COVID is just like the flu, because we all now know that it is not, and acknowledgement that, as leaders of our community, every photo op that you take advantage of, whether during a parade for the chosen few, or any future political events, gives you the opportunity to demonstrate best practices to our community, and I'm for you to do so. Item six during the work session, inclusiveness. The fact that new city council members would not agree to reaffirm previous council statements on racial justice is absolutely appalling to me. Simply a reaffirmation that you support equitable social justice measures in our policies and procedures. I see no reason why current council could not simply have agreed to meet the commitment of the racial equity statement, and to actively work towards preparing a plan of action to create actual initiatives to achieve this goal, because we all know that words mean nothing. Your actions are how you will be judged. So far, you're not doing that great. Instead, what I heard during the work section was a typical straw man argument from Council Member Claffey, about how well our police force does their job, and let me preface this by saying, I am in absolute support of our law enforcement here, locally especially. They are honorable, they do a great job, so me saying that Black Lives Matter is not, is not a statement against our police force. And so I think that you could say both. You could say that you support the police, and you can also say that Black Lives Matter. And when people are talking about Black Lives Matter, it's actually inappropriate for you to divert the conversation to your own agenda. I think you should take that opportunity to listen. Let's see, so Black Lives Matter and support of our police force are not mutually exclusive, they can go hand in hand.
Ms. Narduzzi, your five minutes is up. Thank you. All right, are there any other matters from the public?
Madam Mayor, we have at least one caller on the line.
All right. Please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is Allison Prifeta, I live at 402 Faria Court. I felt like Councilwoman Mead was very clear when she spoke during the work session, that she wasn't looking for a reaffirmation of the statement, but she was looking for an affirmation that there would be some kind of action. I thought the statement was fine, but it's meaningless, if the council is not going to take action on the matter. I found it appalling that Councilman Claffey spoke about widespread rooting across the nation, and we could have focused on things like the fact that the housing board here in Stanton does not have a single housing resident on the board, that the youth commission does not have a single youth of color on its commission, that the Office on Youth admitted recently at one of their meetings, that they do not have any full-time people of color on chance. These are all things that are happening right here in Stanton, that city council could take action on, and that's what the residents are looking for you to do. I don't care about statements. I want to hear how you are going to reallocate resources and redistribute power, so that minority communities in Stanton are able, are afforded the same opportunities that white people have been afforded for hundreds of years. So I hope that maybe at the next meeting, you'll actually talk about what your statement mentioned, which is that there will be some form of action moving forward to make the city of Stanton a more equitable place for its residents and visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional callers?
One more.
All right. Please state your.
Hi, my name is Joshua Graves, and I live at 1500 North Culture Street. I just wanted to call in and reaffirm Mr. Barner's statement to city council and city manager, and I would definitely like to hear from y'all about what you're going to do with that for Stonewall Jackson Hotel. Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you. Are there any additional callers?
Yes, we have another caller.
All right, please state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
Hello, my name is Leyland. Hello, my name is Leyland Pond, I live at 16 College Circle, and unfortunately, I misunderstood how city council works, so I'm going through my spiel that is really not relevant, but it's about the security fees, so I was against it. I want everyone to know that arrests have increased 5% from 2016 to 2019. That's 129 more arrests, and we're talking about 2,671. Actual circuit court fines are up 127% from 2016 to 2019. Budgeted fines are up 124% from 2017 to 2021. Who pays those fines? The Stantonians who can least afford it. Those who are least among us are the people who pay those fines. Now, you don't have any control over those fines, but, those, and then there's the actual circuit court fees that are up 11% from 2016 to 2019. The budgeted fees are up 44% from 2017 to 2021. The same people who can't afford the fees are the ones who are paying those fees. So then we look at the actual courthouse security fees, which was the matter I wanted to speak on. And until 2019, it was $5. At least that's what it says on the budget, because that's where all of my information came from. It was increased to $10 in 2020, I think, and now you're increasing it to 20, and the funny thing is, is that those security fees before, before this increase, have increased 29% from 2016 to 2019. Who wore those to court? The same people who can't afford them. Who's going to bear the increased fee? The same people who can't afford them. So what about sheriff's expenditures? His actual expenditures for the office have increased up to 1%. So while the security fees increased 29%, which I understand those to sheriff's office expenditures haven't increased. Looking at absolute numbers, those security fees increased by over $11,000 from 2016 to 2019. The sheriff's expenditures increased by $948. Also, the Commonwealth's shared expense for the sheriff increased 17, 7.2% over that same time, for an increase total of $19,530. So increasing the security fees. total of $19,530. So increasing the security fee is a smack in the face of people who can't afford it. And there's a hell of a lot of, excuse me, victimless crime. So don't tell me that you care about the victims. And the last thing I want to say is that Vice Mayor Robertson, don't tell Carolyn Dahl not to smile. That is none of your business. It's misogynistic and it is just completely inappropriate. Thank you.
Are there any other callers? All right. You may speak again. Yes.
Thank you. Yes. I, despite the colorful articulation of the caller, um, I think she had something to say about what I was talking about. Um, the fact that there is a miscommunication between Stanton City Council and the public and the police department about parking fees. And I would just like to note that I would not have used her language, but I agree with much of what she says in terms of if you call the police department, they tell you, oh, well, we outsourced our towing to XYZ Company. And that seems to be, and then they can't give you, they won't give you like a contact number or an accountability person. And then you call that company and then they, and I've heard this from many of my friends. I don't want that. I can't officially put that in the record because it's hearsay, I suppose. But, um, yes, I think that's a problem where perhaps the police department could tell you exactly who has your car and, or who has your parking ticket or whatever. So perhaps an easy way to deal with this that might cause less friction would be more where the police, whom I have respect for, could be equipped with information about whoever is handling this and is subcontracting.
Mr. Rosenberg, can you, um, receive this citizen's information and maybe have someone from the police department, um, Police Chief Williams, give her a call?
Yes.
And then, um, no, he's going to give you information.
Well, normally, it doesn't normally, the, on the ticket, the.
Okay. Um, anyone else on the line to speak?
No.
All right. Hearing no other matters from the public, as mayor of the city of Stanton, I call this meeting adjourned.